We are live streamed right now, aren't we?
Live?
Yep, we're live and life happens even in Zoom.
Who would like to do the pledge of allegiance? We will open this meeting at 6:30 PM, 6:36 PM. Who would like to do the pledge of allegiance? Nothing said, I'll go ahead and start. Are you want to go Wendy, Councilmember Lau? Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I unmute myself. If everybody will please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. A roll call. Mr. Rushi?
Yes, Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Here.
Mayor Hepburn?
Here.
We will move right into presentations. This is a celebration of our military. We have a photo of Ryan. Ryan moved to Laverne in 2006 where he attended both Ramona Middle School and Benita High School. He graduated from Benita in 2013 after spending his years in a marching band, jazz band, and drum line. In the past, he has had several jobs working for Raging Waters, Disneyland, and Ace Hardware. He joined the Navy in 2020 and has made rank quicker than most. He is now an aviation ordinance man for Helicopter Maritime Squadron, HSM 78, and leaves for deployment in early July of this year. He's an avid movie lover and a devoted son and fiance. Ryan has three brothers, two sisters, and an extended family that are extremely proud of him. And that is for, we honor Mr. Ryan M. Torres for the Navy and thank you for serving as we appreciate all of our veterans and all our current members in the military. Thank you very much. We move on to SB 1383 and AB 1594.
Tim, could I ask a question going back to the military?
Yes.
Mr. Rushi, could you give us an update just because so many people have been asking? Our Memorial Day service, are we still not going to be able to have that this year?
That they're not going to be able to have it. They discussed it a month or so ago and given where the restrictions were at at the time, they just didn't think it was appropriate to have a gathering of any sort. So they are not going to be coordinating that, but we will be doing Veterans Day for sure.
Oh, good.
Prepared for all the information to come out on them.
Wonderful.
And Councilmember Crosby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hepburn. I know you recognized Mr. Torres, but I also believe that in part of the thing, and I don't know if you said it, if I missed it, but we have a total of 69 community members who are currently serving.
Yeah, Laverne has a total of 69 community members who are currently serving in our military and that's what we recognize Mr. Torres as one of those 69. Thank you. Apologize for that.
Ready? Any more questions on the Military Banner Program?
Okay, I think we'll move on.
Yes, um, so what we have before you tonight, as council is aware, we have scheduled a public hearing for next month as it relates to your refuse rate increases as required by Prop 218. And a little unique this year because there are several other state required changes that will be imposed and result in fee increases because of them. We thought it was best if we did a presentation to help council understand what those, what those new requirements and mandates are that are rolling out. They basically fall in the manner of two particular pieces of legislation. One is SB 1383 and the other is AB 1594. So we have three segments of a presentation for you tonight. The first is from Cal Recycling, who is the regulatory body and the one who gets to oversee and interpret all of these legislations that are there. And I think I see those individuals on there. Second will be followed by City Staff Lisa O'Brien, who will be telling you what efforts the city of Laverne has been taking to make sure we are to be compliant with those regulations when the time is appropriate and they come into place. And then the third will be Tracy Costello, who will be giving you kind of an overview of what the effect is going to be on the rates that will be approved next month. So.
Welcome, Ms. Morgan. Welcome, Mr. Taylor and welcome, Ms. Gomez. We're excited to hear about organic waste and also compostable organic. So we're ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll wait up, there we go. Thank you. Oh, good evening, council members. I'm so appreciative of being here. My name is Cara Morgan. I'm Cal Recycles Branch Chief for the Local Assistance and Market Development Branch. I also have your Cal Recycle liaisons with me, Melissa Gomez and Jeff Taylor. The presentation today will be a very high level overview. I'd like to spend time answering any questions that you have. Next slide. Just first of all, why is this new regulation so very important? Organic waste comprises two thirds of California's waste stream and food waste alone is the largest waste stream in California. And with all of that, we still have right now one in four Californians going hungry every night in California. So I'm going to talk a little bit more on the next slide, please, about the reasons we're implementing this new regulation. This regulation is part of California's larger strategy to combat the climate change crisis. The law was designed to reduce the global warming super pollutants like methane, which is up to 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. And landfills are one of the largest producers of methane in the state. They're actually in the top three. As we know, when organic material breaks down in the landfill, methane is generated. So we have to move away from landfilling organic waste like food, paper, and yard waste if we're going to combat climate change. Next slide. Very briefly, the, this new regulation is set up to be a statewide target that requires California to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% and edible food recovery for human consumption by 20% by 2025. Organic waste is defined broadly and it includes food waste, paper, cardboard, green waste, organic textiles, lumber, wood, bio solids, manure, and sludges. Cal Recycle has been collaborating with jurisdictions like the city of Laverne over the past three and a half years. Next slide. So just briefly, let me talk about the benefits. If we successfully implement California's super pollutant reduction strategy, we will achieve improved air quality and less landfill waste. We'll be able to provide millions of meals to Californians who are in need and we'll be able to create thousands of new green jobs. Next slide. On this side, there, these are just some of the key implementation dates. The most important date I'd like to point out is this regulation takes effect on January 1, 2022, which means jurisdictions should have their programs in place and Cal Recycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities. In 2024, jurisdictions need to take enforcement action against noncompliant entities and I'll talk more about that. Next slide. Briefly, I'd just like to hit on what the city of Laverne, other cities and counties requirements will be. First, each city and county will be required to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. This is what we refer to as automatically providing service or universal service. The resident or business is automatically provided the service rather than having to sign up or volunteer for it. The regulation standardized container colors across the state, which is to be fully implemented by January 1, 2036. Jurisdictions can also issue three types of waivers to generators. Jurisdictions are also required to implement an edible food recovery program and I'll talk more about this, the types of commercial edible food generators that are required to participate. Each city and county must also conduct annual education outreach to all of your residents and businesses. The city must also procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products like compost, renewable gas, or electricity from certain products, as well as purchase recycled content paper and paper price and performance is comparable. And each jurisdiction will have a specific target assigned to them to achieve and that will be provided to the city prior to January 1, 2022. The city must plan for also having adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and edible food recovery. And this is an important role that your hauler will play in assisting you in that effort. Cal Recycle will be providing a number of tools to your staff to help you with this capacity planning effort, as well as collaborating and coordinating with the county. Each city must also monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. To reduce reporting jurisdictions will be required to maintain records and keep information in an implementation record. Next slide, please. Just briefly, I'd like to talk about how, you know, different departments within the city will need to participate. This slide shows an illustration of if you were to think about the city of Laverne, the different departments that would have a role to play. For example, the finance department or where the procurement is done. That department may be responsible for ensuring that all the records are kept. Your public work staff are playing an important role as far as getting set up the organics waste collection services programs that will be required. So there are many decisions that city council will need to decide and as your staff present these options to you in the coming months, it will be really important to think about, you know, that all of the departments within the city are aware of this requirement and play a role in helping the city to be in compliance. Next slide. Briefly, I'd just like to talk about the edible food recovery program. This is very unique and different than kind of we've ever really done before. We are the first state in the nation and actually in the world that's done anything like this to really focus on recovering edible food that's safe to be recovered and getting it to people that are in need instead of throwing it away or even, you know, composting it. So the city is going to be required to have an education outreach program to provide the necessary capacity or the edible food recovery infrastructure that will be necessary for your tier one and tier two commercial edible food generators. And on this slide, this shows the, the types of tier one and tier two generators that your staff is starting to work on identifying. There are also some record keeping and reporting requirements, as well as inspections will be required to be conducted with these particular entities in your city to ensure that they're keeping the proper records and they, that they have edible food recovery agreements with food recovery services and organizations. Next slide, please. Briefly, just like to talk about jurisdictions, your city's requirement for inspections and enforcement. So starting January 1, 2022, you will need to have an enforcement mechanism or ordinance in place and I know your staff is working on that. Between January 2022 and December 2023, the focus is providing education to your generators. And then beginning in 2024, if it's necessary, the city needs to take progressive enforcement action if a generator is out of compliance. However, with that said, an early robust education program will minimize the amount of enforcement action needed. And we think that if your city is providing these services to its residents and commercial businesses, then there should not be a need to have any enforcement for recycling. That certainly is our hope and intention with this regulation. Next slide, please. Just very briefly, I'd talk, I'd like to talk about Cal Recycle's oversight. So first and foremost, Cal Recycle will be directly responsible for overseeing entities that are not subject to the city's control. For example, schools and school districts. The, the city will be responsible for providing education outreach to these entities. The SB 1383 is a statewide target, as I mentioned earlier, and not a jurisdiction target. So it's a little bit different than your existing, what we call AB 939 or recycling program oversight. It's tailored a little bit differently, but it has some similarities. Under these regulations, if Cal Recycle determines a city or county is violating one or more of the requirements, first and foremost, Cal Recycle is going to focus on compliance assistance. We're going to identify what the gap is, communicate that and provide you the necessary tools so that you can come into compliance. So while we can begin to enforce on this regulation, the timelines for that enforcement are not triggered until we decide that an enforcement action or penalty is necessary. And again, it's been our, our track record, we really focus on compliance assistance first and only utilize our enforcement tools if they're really needed. Next slide. Also, just briefly, and I'm not really going to go into all the details because we've been apprising your staff, but Cal Recycle has been developing a number of tools to help your staff and other cities and counties to be able to come into compliance and, and implement the various aspects of their programs that they need to. We've developed a number of tools, held, just, oh gosh, I don't even know the number now, of statewide webinars and training. We have more tools coming out and will continue to assist your staff as they implement this, this new law. So, and also if there's anything that your staff need, all they have to do is let Melissa Gomez know and we'll get them the tools they need and resources. Next slide. And lastly, I'd like to conclude by commending the city council. Your staff, Lisa O'Brien and Tracy Costillo from Public Works have been phenomenal to work with. I'd also like to commend Donald Taylor Stewart and Terry Muse from Waste Management for diligently working with your team towards implementing a program that will meet the SB 1383 regulations. The city has already implemented a timeline outlining the major items that they will be working towards compliance with. And I'd also like to commend your team. They've attended several of our training webinars. They have been working hard and developing a list of their tier one and tier two commercial edible food generators, as well as identifying the available edible food capacity and what's going to be needed for meeting the needs of the tier one and tier two commercial edible food generators. They've also been working hard to conduct education outreach to all businesses and working strategically on developing your implementation plan. The city staff have been very proactive and easy to work with and we truly look forward to seeing the city continue with its timeline to execute its program by January 1, 2022. So that concludes my presentation and I would just like to thank you for your time and for your leadership on this very important effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, appreciate it. We are moving to.
Well, I think what I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, just see if there are any questions that council might have of Cal Recycling on the broader requirements and then we can get into some of the specifics.
I have a hand up for Councilmember Lau. No? Put your hand down, Councilmember Lau. You don't know how. Bottom of your screen. Bottom of your screen. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Morgan? Councilmember Crosby?
I just, is, is there funds associated with this decree from the state that we have to do this to help with our staff? Because I know our staff is, as though they might, I know they're exceptional helping out and doing things, but they're doing a lot of other stuff as well. And when the state decrees us to do these things, being the first one in the world to, to, to be doing this as a state, do they send some funds directed with this so that it can be supported? Or is our city staff just need to be able to do it?
Thank you, council member. I appreciate that comment. So first the bad news and then the good news. First, the bad news is that in the legislation, the legislature did not provide funding. So at the time the bill was passed and through the regulatory process, there was no specific funding. There has been funding for grants for expanding infrastructure for the cycling aspect, but not to provide support as you laid out for, for your staff. However, just this past week at a Senate Budget Subcommittee hearing, there was a presentation of $200 million being allocated to cities and counties to help fund staff, to help fund many of these activities. So I encourage you to reach out to your legislators in support of that and because that is the way that cities and counties will receive funding for these activities. Certainly, Cal Recycle will be expeditious in getting those funds out to city and county local governments. Did that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So basically, Ms. Morgan, you're giving us $200 million for our little city. I really appreciate that, that is so wonderful. And yes, our staff is fantastic and thank you Tracy and thank you Lisa for the $200 million that you acquired. Thank you. All kidding aside, no, thank you very much. Councilmember Crosby, I will say that being in England a few times, their recycling program and their organic waste is severe. They do not, there is not one iota inch of error because if you have one piece of food waste go in with your recycled glass or plastic, it's a major fine. So we are on the heels of something that's going to change the way. And I'll be brutally honest, I'm the worst probably in the world and I've been starting to look at it and go, okay, we got to really separate this stuff. So anyway, Councilmember Davis, sorry.
No worries. Along the same line, and this may be a little too technical to answer, but I mean, in addition to England, Japan for decades has been well out there as far as reducing landfill products. When I was studying them back in the eighties, they were already at 93% of, of waste not going to a landfill. So, so yes, we have some catching up to do, but again, we're, we're out there on the leading edge of the United States for sure. So the question I have, because I know a lot of our residents are very proactive, what impact does composting have with respect to the organic waste paradigm? Or is that too technical to get into? Because I know that some people might be concerned that they're going to start producing methane in their backyard, which I believe is not the case when they compost.
Yeah, that, that is a really great question. So when we're talking about the larger compost facilities, because of the technology now, methane, one, is, is not the same level it is as it's released from a landfill. So there are many control mechanisms, all kinds of new technology, aerated piles and, and just a lot of technology that's used to ensure that methane is not emitted. So it definitely is efficient. You know, I, I think when we talk about composting in our backyard, there's a lot of material that kind of naturally decomposes and what we want to do is, is get that back into the soil because when that material is put back into the soil, that carbon is what we call sequestered, kind of stored in the soil and that's exactly what we want to do. So both composting in our backyards or at those big facilities is what we need to do. NASA did some flyover studies just recently and reconfirmed that landfills are the third largest emitter of methane in our state across the board. So it's definitely something that we can do something about. And not to mention the edible food recovery piece. You know, there, there are probably residents right now in the city of Laverne who are facing food insecurity, certainly in my own neighborhood. And it's just vitally important that we stop wasting our food and get it to people in need. It makes sense. Thank you, member.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. So Tim, in addition to having more background, backyard barbecues for your neighbors, you can join other residents and compost a little bit more to solve the problem.
There you go. I like that. We will do that. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Councilmember Lau, any questions? Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, I was just thinking though, boy, Tim, where you and I live in Bobcrest, that would be a smorgasbord for bears up here and all the animals going through our dirt. So, you know, it is what it is, so.
Well, we appreciate that. Yeah, and I, the bottom line is to greenhouse gases and that's the bottom line to divert and get the, your compostable organics, which they've been dumping and get those in with the, you know, your organics. And then also the big thing is to make sure that the food that can be saved gets in the hands of people that actually need it, which is something that I've seen for years. Although the grocery stores being in the business for so many years, they do utilize a lot of their bread stuffs and things like that that they give to many, many different charities, which is wonderful and Costco also. But it can be better, always better. Any other questions for Ms. Morgan? We will move forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate your information.
Thank you, Cara. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Lisa O'Brien and I'm Senior Management Analyst with the Public Works Department. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents and staff. My presentation tonight will cover the implementation of SB 1383 in Laverne as it stands currently. As we move forward over the next few months and years, we'll continue to gain more knowledge of how these requirements will play out. Next slide, please. SB 1383 passed back in September of 2016. However, the regulations supporting the bill passed in November of 2020. The most recent regulations take effect on January 1, 2022. Enforcement begins on January 1, 2024. Waste management in the city of Laverne have been conducting education for many years. Some of it through efforts to gain compliance for AB 341 and 1826. Various methods have been used, including billing messages, articles in conservation corner, website information, letters, phone calls, emails, waste management website, the Magazine of Values, pre-COVID community events, social media, and personal visits. These avenues will continue to be utilized to disseminate information for SB 1383. Next slide, please. At the center of SB 1383 is organics collection. Waste management will be collecting and processing the material according to the requirements detailed in the regulations. We're very happy to have Waste Management as our hauler, who has guaranteed us organic processing capacity through the amendment and subsequent rate increase agreement, which Tracy will be speaking on shortly. Without contracted capacity, the city would be required to develop a plan to close the capacity needs gap, including a timeline and funding. Waste management will also be addressing the container requirements. No additional carts will be rolled out for residential properties. Residents will simply add organic waste into their green carts. If you need a replacement cart in the next few years, you may notice that it's going to look slightly different. The carts will be black and the lids will be the colors indicating more materials go into that cart as required by the bill. Additionally, their law requires labels to be on the carts for specifics about the contents. We're not required to retrieve ball carts in the city, but to phase them in and have them all changed over by 2036. Next slide, please. Edible food recovery is another key component of SB 1383. Edible food is defined as food intended for and suitable for human consumption while meeting safety standards. Over the last few months, we have identified and made contact with operators of the facilities that fall within the categories of food generators that are required to have a food rescue program. We are in the process of understanding what operations are existing, if there are gaps in donation capacity and how the current operations need to be fine tuned to comply. We're collaborating with partners at Sewing Seats for Life, the LA County Food Drop Program, the Council of Governments, and our neighboring San Gabriel Valley Cities, as it's most likely we will need additional food recovery capacity and funding. Next slide, please. Enforcements. Enforcement will begin from the city to the community in 2024. However, enforcement will begin from Cal Recycle to the city in 2022. Fines are $10,000 a day per violation and the regulations state that the lack of funding or staffing on the city's part is not considered a valid reason for noncompliance. Next slide, please. Inspections. The regulations provide two options for contaminant minimization. One option is the route reviews conducted annually and must include a specific sample size from every route. The second option is comprised of waste evaluations conducted every six months, where samples are collected from each container type and the contaminants in each container type are weighed. Both options have established thresholds that if exceeded, trigger a notification protocol. Inspections are required for edible food recovery generators to verify that the program activities are occurring as prescribed. We are currently assessing whether we can combine these inspections with stormwater inspections for costs and time savings to our businesses. Next slide, please. Procurement. Cities are required to procure materials made from organics processing. Fuel will most likely be our path due to Waste Management's conversion of dairy farm manure to fuel used to power their collection trucks while servicing our city. Additionally, cities are required to purchase paper products with recycled materials if costs are equal to or less than virgin material. And some of the examples are listed there. Next slide, please. Record keeping. The details of all of our efforts must be included through very specific record keeping that we hope to purchase a software system to help manage. Purchasing a software system will help tremendously with time, personnel, and cost savings in addition to meeting the requirements of the legislation that detail the need for one central storage location, that the retrieval and production of all records can be accommodated within days of a Cal Recycle request and that the records can be retained for the required time period. All of the components listed must be included in our records. Ordinances, contracts for the city and those between generators and food rescue operations, educational events and publications, notices, contamination incidents, waivers, enforcement, inspections, receipts, and tracking for procurement requirements. Next slide, please. As we wrap up, there are some considerations that I want to talk out there. In terms of costs, the current rate increase only addresses partial compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three, specifically organic costs for residential. Some costs are still to be determined for contamination minimization, enhanced education, software, inspections, enforcement, and possibly more. Oftentimes, it helps to take note of what other cities in our area are doing and how their rates compare. At this time, many of them are in the process of negotiating contract conditions and rates, incorporating varying levels of these requirements. Many of them are not as far along in their compliance pathways as us. Some don't have a contracted facility to process organics. Others don't have solid options for procurement requirements or effective contamination mechanisms, for example, source separation. As the picture of compliance continues to get clearer and additional aspects of the program go live, we will begin to see rates adjust accordingly. We will keep you updated periodically as this program progresses. This concludes my presentation. We ask that you hold questions until after Tracy's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Good evening, Ms. Costello.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff and Laverne residents. Tonight, I will be discussing the details of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two refuse rate increase. Next slide, please. There are essentially three components to the proposed refuse rate increase. Consumer Price Index, a green waste increase that is referenced by Assembly Bill fifteen ninety-four, and then, of course, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three discussing the food waste organics increase. Next slide, please. Consumer Price Index, or CPI. Each year, Waste Management can request a CPI increase per section seventeen point six one of the franchise agreement. The CPI is a measure of the average change over time in the prices paid by urban consumers for goods and/or services. The CPI increase formula allows for one hundred percent of the all-urban consumer garbage and trash collection US city average per the agreement. The CPI increase for July one, twenty twenty-one, through June thirty, twenty twenty-two is three point four nine percent. Next slide, please. Assembly Bill fifteen ninety-four, per AB fifteen ninety-four, effective January first, twenty twenty. That's almost eighteen months ago. The use of green material as alternative daily cover, or ADC, did not constitute diversion through recycling. To date, Waste Management has absorbed those additional costs. Approximately one-third of all green waste in Southern California was previously used as ADC. The higher demand for composting and land application facilities resulted in price increases across California. The blended rate of composting and land application for Laverne green waste increased from forty-six ninety-six a ton to eighty-one thirty-seven per ton over the past year and a half. The result is a dollar seventy-five monthly increase per home. The dollar seventy-five green waste increase will go into effect July one, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, effective January first of twenty twenty-two. SB thirteen eighty-three requires all cities to mandate residential and commercial organic composting in order to reduce disposal of organic waste by the year twenty twenty-five. Currently, one hundred and forty-eight composting facilities process green waste, and only nineteen of those facilities are permitted for both green waste and food waste. That's about thirteen percent. Waste Management acquired the South Valley Composting Facility in Tulare, California. The South Valley facility is fully permitted to accept all organic material from Laverne and offers the best solution for both green waste and food waste. The cost to process, transport, and compost organics from Laverne at South Valley is a hundred and sixteen dollars fifteen cents per ton. The increase to add food waste program to the residential service is a dollar seventy-seven monthly per home. The dollar seventy-seven waste increase will go go into effect on January first of twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. Following left to right on the chart, this is a a summary of the rate increase for the residential carts. You have your cart size thirty-five sixty-four ninety-six and additional green waste in excess of two. You have the current build rate. That's what the residents see on their bill. So what we need to do is back out the Laverne admin fee of a dollar forty to get to the Waste Management base rate. We then take that base rate and we add in the three point four nine percent CPI. We add back in the city of Laverne dollar forty admin fee. We add in that green waste fee of a dollar seventy-five, and that gives us our new build rate for July first of twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Then, for the January first increase, we take that, again, the cart size. We take that that new July first, twenty twenty-one build rate. We add in the food waste increase of a dollar seventy-seven per cart, and that gets us our January first, twenty twenty-two new build rate. Next slide, please. Commercial rate increase, effective July first of twenty twenty-one. All commercial rates will increase by three point four nine percent. That's the CPI. Effective January first of twenty twenty-two, in order to comply with the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three, Waste Management will offer mixed green waste and food waste services to commercial and multifamily customers. The green waste roll-up bin will increase from eighty-one thirty-seven per ton to one sixteen fifteen per ton. Currently, only certain customers, such as restaurants, are required to participate in a food waste organics per Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six. Effective January first of twenty twenty-two, all commercial and multifamily customers are required to participate in the mixed green waste and food waste service, which results in a dollar fifty-four per yard rate increase. Waste Management bills all commercial and multifamily customers that have been serviced. That function will be done through Waste Management. Next slide, please. I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of myself. Lisa O'Brien will also be happy to take any questions as well.
Council, do we have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do. You know, Tracy, yeah, thinking of the residents in town, the cost keeps going up for, I'm looking just at, I took notes for the thirty-five gallon, which is a smaller can, to look at the taxes increase. We're talking this July first of twenty twenty-one, two dollars and forty-one cents, that's going to increase. And then again, in January twenty twenty-two, it's going up again. It seems like such a terrible time after COVID for so many families that are going back to work, you know, daycare, this and that. Is this something that can be delayed through the state or, you know, it's just, it's terrible? I think it's, you know, taxing people over and over. So what's your input?
Unfortunately, COVID has not been an excuse that CalRecycle has given any leniency for. They have not changed the the requirements and the requirement dates, as you just saw by the presentation. So at this point, although I agree with what you're saying, unfortunately, staff does not have any authority to say that because of COVID, we can't comply with these requirements.
Okay, I tried.
So did we. I'm sorry, this is Lisa. To kind of pick you back off that, there are current talks between us and some of our other cities to try and express that concern. But I do not have any signs of any movement at this point. So we'll keep you posted. Hopefully, we can come and I can tell you good news in a couple of months. But as of right now, this is the timeline we have to work with.
Oh, good. I'm glad you are on top of this and that you're aware of it, too, and trying. So thank you for that, for the residents.
Absolutely.
If I may, would it be helpful, I don't know where the, if this is going through CalRecycling, if there were to be maybe a letter that went through the Assembly Member, Assembly Member or State Assembly to encourage that?
I would absolutely agree that that's a great move, Bob.
No, if that's something that is of interest to encourage delay that the council would like, we can try and, we can send a letter to to ask for assistance with that. That would be the place to 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 start.
Well, Lisa and Tracy, I feel bad throwing that on you, but that would be great to get a letter off for that. But of course, the state's not paying you for your time doing all this. So here, you know, falls back on them. But yeah, I think that's very important if we didn't do a letter to our Assemblymen.
I would be happy to draft a letter and get that to you soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Lau, you had a question?
Yes, I was just wondering, in terms of the education component, is there any thought, and I don't know, since I think CalRecycle is is off off the call at this point, but is there any, I guess, helpful tips or education on how to reduce waste in general? Because then, I mean, my thoughts along the same lines in terms of, you know, helping families save money while also simultaneously helping reduce the amount of waste that are, you know, that is getting put into our landfills. How do we reduce what we use and how do we reuse what we, you know, so that we aren't generating that waste? I don't know if that's part of the education component or not, and I've seen Ms. Morgan is is on. So I don't know if that's something planned within the education component or if it's really just education on how to comply with the bills themselves.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, and thank you. I appreciate hearing the conversation and Councilmember Carter's comments as well. So, yeah, we are embarking on a statewide campaign for residents about, you know, the the new requirements and how to comply, but also preventing waste in the first place, looking at how we're buying and purchasing, and that will continue to be some of our education efforts. In the meantime, we do have a number of kind of tools that we've developed. So Councilmember Lau, if you'd like us to connect with your staff and and share some of those educational materials, and we can certainly get that to your team as well, as in addition to the statewide effort that we're embarking on.
I think that would be helpful and to the extent that we can share that, you know, on our social media, on our websites and whatnot. I think that would just give at least some sort of proactive steps for folks to be able to take, so.
Excuse my dog's chewing on a rock. Sorry, guys.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Lau's comment, there are also a variety of educational resources on the city website, in addition to the Waste Management website, and a lot of the different messaging mechanisms that we use throughout the year. Obviously, this year it looks a little different than it has in the past, but I think we can say that about everything. So there's definitely print, electronic, periodical articles, lots of different information that I can help put you in the right direction. I can definitely meet with you after.
That would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Crosby.
No wonder why costs keep going up if our facility is four and a half hours, five hours away to layer. I wonder how much the fuel cost that we're wasting to drive it that far? Is it really the same effectiveness? But again, our state's making mandates that what we have to do. Question is, we have, just for our community too, we have costs going on our our green waste. We have always costs going on our our black waste. What about our gray barrels? Or can they ask for more gray barrels so that they are recycling more at their home and without a less cost and stuff, too? Just want to make sure that residents know, because we have a black barrel that throws in our waste, and we have a green for our stuff, but we have the gray recyclable. Can someone have more recyclable bins without extra costs?
So the the rates are charged in excess of two. So your primary trash cart is charged at a full price, depending on the size. If you have additional black carts or trash carts, those are charged at a discounted rate. Your first two gray are recycling, and your first two green or green waste are combined in your trash rate. It's like a combined rate. Anything in excess of two in the recycling or the green waste are charged. I will be honest, we are currently not charging for those because we do not have a count. But once Waste Management conducts their field survey, we will then notify customers that have greater than two, that they will be charged in additional fee, or they can return those additional carts.
Yeah, so I have one gray one. I could be asked for an extra gray cart without being more.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Thank you. That might help out some of our residents as well.
Member Davis.
And don't forget the composting.
I'll bring that to your house.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You know, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna chime in a little bit here, because as you know, our our model of service was very poor during the the holiday months. And I have a real problem with the three point four nine percent increase, which we'll discuss at a later date. But my concern is the fact that, understanding AB fifteen ninety-four and SB thirteen eighty-three, understanding organic and composting. My concern is the fact that it sounds like Waste Management is a little ahead of this, and I will concur with Mr. Crosby. Tulare is not a hop, skip and a jump. It's it's quite a distance to haul, you know, organics. But have we compared with other cities that do have this in place, or we don't have that data yet to see what they're charging for barrel additional? I mean, that's something that we need to look at, because as as Councilmember Carter said, our community has been, you know, just beat beat down with all these costs and our business is being shut down in COVID. And and then, you know, we had a very poor model of service during our holidays. So, but again, I understand the organic part, but I just want to make sure that, I mean, I don't like paying anything extra, but I do understand this is going to help with the green, you know, greenhouse gas emissions and stuff, which is very, very important to all of us, but and global warming and all those other issues. But I think we need to make sure that we're paying a fair price, not an exorbitant price for our service and for the barrel pickups to make sure that other agencies, other haulers are, what's the, what's the comparison? That would be my biggest concern.
So Bob Russi asked me to conduct an analysis of the adjacent cities. Unfortunately, because we are so much further along in this game than any other of our comparison cities, I did not feel it was fair to compare us, you know, so far ahead of the game, when they don't even have a a guarantee of capacity. They're not source separating. They're not. It just wasn't a fair comparison at this point. I will be conducting a staff report at the public hearing. And I'm hoping at that time, because most agencies are looking at the July-ish for their rate increases, that I'll have more information to share. Even if it's not a fair comparison, I will provide some comparisons. But at this time, most cities don't even know what they're gonna do.
And I I appreciate that. The thing is, well, I guess, then we need to maybe, maybe we can hold off on that increase until we know what the comparison rates are, so that we're paying a fair rate, not just a rate because they're the only one out of the gate, to make sure that our residents are being paying, paying what they need to, but nothing more than that. So that was just, so we'll have to wait, I guess. Councilmember.
Yeah, so if I may, Mayor, being the numbers nerd I am, I went and didn't do an organized sampling, but I did a little bit of sampling out in communities near us, and I really landed on a on a good one, which was the city of Covina, which is an, you know, not, I don't know if they're in our comparison or not, but they had a nice residual rate comparison chart. And so when I looked at our new fee of twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents a cart per month, we come in two dollars less than Baldwin Park, eight dollars less than Claremont, six dollars less than Covina, twelve dollars less than Glendora, six dollars less than Monrovia, ten dollars less than West Covina. We're essentially seven and a half dollars less than the average of those cities. So we're the least cost. ten dollars less than West Covina, we're essentially seven and a half dollars less than the average of those cities. So we're the least cost provider at the new level.
Good to know. But I would like to know who their carriers are and what the model is. Obviously, these cities are very similar in size. Some of them, not Covina, but Claremont. So that that's good to know. But I I still would like to see that on a global issue around, but that's that's good to know.
At the public hearing, as we've done previously, provide this same and Tracy, what's the number? I don't remember the number of agencies that we compared it to.
Twelve, between twelve and fifteen. It just depends on if they provide service or not.
Of course. So we will be sure to include that as part of the public hearing next month, for sure.
Just just one quick comment. When they did some analysis from Cal Recycle, they did some studies about what they expected the average monthly increase for some homes to be with SB thirteen eighty-three hitting. And the figure was anywhere between five to seven dollars per home per month. I I don't know how much that's been updated as things have progressed. And this was a pre-COVID study, so that changes a lot of things too. But and also because we're a little bit smaller, I would guess that our economies of scale wouldn't be quite as beneficial. So just to give you an idea, that's the numbers that the state was putting out, I I want to say a year or two ago on those cost studies. So and of course, we haven't incorporated every operational cost potentially that will be hitting us from SB thirteen eighty-three. But I have to tell you, I was honestly looking at the scale of this law and looking at what we have, what we're getting for that couple dollar increase. It's a lot better than I expected as as somebody who's been dealing with this for a couple of years now.
You're basically what we call a trash expert. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, you guys have, and I know that we've had issues before with, you know, charges not being charged and large hauling in the restaurants. So we really appreciate everything you guys do. I know this is a real tough one. Mr. Russi.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Lisa and Tracy. The other thing that they have been doing is since they're so far ahead, they've been tasked with going around and educating some of the other cities on what it takes to implement the this new piece of legislation. So they have not just become our experts, they've become the area experts. So thank you very much for for being ahead of the game on this.
Does not surprise me. Thank you both very, very much. You're great. And thank you for Ms. Morgan and all of you. Does anybody have any questions for staff or Ms. Morgan or any other?
Just thank you. I think we can be charged for their services to other cities.
That's how I make some money back.
I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There, when we move to it, there is a resident that has his hand up.
I cannot see anything, guys. Yes. Then we will, let's move to, we have some, anybody with comment on this from the public? Mr. Bowen, good evening. Again. You're you're muted. Mr. Bowen, you're muted. There you go. We're good.
Good evening again. I have a couple of statement and a and a couple of questions. About two years ago, I believe, maybe this month, the city awarded a ten-year no-bid agreement to Waste Management. So is this the fruits of that labor coming to coming to pay us back two years later? Again, for a no-bid agreement. During in that agreement, and again, I don't have it, so I'll have to do it by memory. And is there a Waste Management representative there?
Yes, I have Karen Hughes here with Waste Management.
Okay, great. I had a question. It seems to me when when the city gave you the no-bid agreement, one of the, there was a couple of things that I remember, one of them being the CPI calculation. And it went from a a regular federal calculation to this special trash calculation. Is that not correct?
The CPI calculation is also a federal calculation.
It's but this is this this calculation is based on, previously it was the the standard CPI, and this year, or when they renewed the agreement, it went to this special trash calculation, which this year is three point four nine. And I believe the federal calculation for CPI at the end of the year was one point seven. So we're essentially getting stuck with double on this new CPI calculation, and nobody made a big deal of it then. But I would assume that Waste Management knew all about it, that it was going to be much higher in the future, and we're going to pay for it now. Also, wasn't transportation part of our previous agreement? And it was also taken out. So as Councilperson Crosby just mentioned, you know, now we're transporting this stuff four hours away, and we didn't have to pay it before. But now, lo and behold, we have to pay for four-hour transport of trash. That seems kind of silly. But we're stuck with a ten-year no-bid agreement, correct?
So the contract was a ten-year extension. That's correct. The Tularia facility is about a hundred and ninety-five miles from the Zusa Waste Management Facility. Waste Management did conduct an analysis. They put out a request for request for bids or proposals or a fee to determine if there were any facilities closer that could assist with the organics capacity. And unfortunately, all the way from San Diego County up through Los Angeles County, out of you've received five.
Out of twenty-six facilities, we received five bids or proposals. And one of those was for a facility that's not yet been permitted or developed. The other four are for Northern California, Central California, California facilities. There just simply is not enough facilities right now in LA County, or I should say Southern California. So until they're built and permitted, then unfortunately, there's going to have to be a transportation all the way to long distances. They're the only ones that right now have permitted facilities.
Well, it's unfortunate for us because we have to pay for it. It's not not that bad for you because we're paying for it. My last comment being a seven percent increase in July, which is two months from now, and eleven percent increase in January, which is approximately seven months. So we have almost nineteen percent increase, eighteen point seven, to be exact, over the next seven months. And and as you just said, the CPI, even for your special trash assessment is three point four nine. So the citizens are going to get stuck with a huge increase percentage-wise, and I'm wondering how they justify nineteen percent increase coming off the end of especially the end of the pandemic. And the last thing I would ask the Waste Management representatives, has Waste Management discontinued the giving of gifts to city officials? We've had council people accept gifts, and we've had our city attorney accept dinners every year, and we've had our city manager collecting gifts in in various forms. So two years ago, when when it was extended, I asked that that was one of those stipulations that that no longer would Waste Management give gifts in the form of money, dinner, tickets, et cetera. Have you discontinued that practice, or is that still continuing?
Um, we have not given any dinners to any for any council members. One thing we do give is we do give some pistachios at Christmas for council members. I know a lot of them do give them to staff members or give them to, they don't accept them. So that's the only thing that we do.
So you've discontinued giving city officials and and consultants and employees such as the city manager, you've discontinued that as a practice?
Yeah, we have not done any dinners or given any gifts of pistachios to anybody.
Well, you may have not done it last year because COVID. What I'm asking you has, have you discontinued that as a standard practice?
So, Mr. Bowen, I wanted to reference your comment as far as the.
I'll take that as a no. Thank you.
Tracy, with the city of Laverne speaking, you are correct. Those are, those percentages are very close to what you discussed. Unfortunately, those are basically based on state law to comply with state law. So once again, these are state law requirements that we're we're looking to comply with.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more comment about the Tularia facility. I reviewed a report that was a more in-depth kind of findings from Waste Management's assessment, and it turns out that a big problem with getting these facilities permitted is the air AQMD, thank you, AQMD, the Air Quality Management District. So the type of technology that's needed to do this type of processing is basically just short of, if not prohibited, in the SQAMD, I'm sorry, South Coast AQMD District. So it doesn't matter what holler we have, that's probably going to be a consistent problem, unfortunately, for all of Southern California or anybody that's in that district.
Thank you very much, Lisa and Tracy. We have another hand up, apparently, JR.
No, sir. That was the one hand up, and I have been checking and monitoring emails. There's no emails requesting for this item.
We'll go ahead and close it and bring it back. Council, we have more questions for staff or for Waste Management, any other information or discussion? Mr. Crosby.
Just one last statement. Really appreciate our staff being on the forefront. I know this, my comments before, the state is pushing down on this. But I drive through Glendora to get to work on Trash Day, and they just have all their trash out and not organized in any which way. So I wonder why their costs are so high compared to ours. Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for for giving those those stats. And I and I know our staff is working really hard to make sure that we don't fall behind and run into this. Again, the state's the ones that's mandating us to do this, but appreciate our staff getting really on the forefront.
Thank you.
Crosby. Yes, thank you, staff. You guys always do a great job. I know this is a trashy situation, but we will get through it. Hey, you know what? If it reduces greenhouse gas emissions, and I mean, people aren't afraid to pay a little extra, as long as it's fair competitive rates that we do reduce that, save our little planet here whatever way we can. So it's great. And we do thank you. And thank you for being educators for other communities. We're just gonna have to get with Mr. Russi and have a little, maybe a little stipend, a little fee schedule to that one. He could get some money on that. But thank you guys very much. And and thank you for our Waste Management staff and our others for Cal Recycle. Thank you very much. Other than that, do we need to, Mr. Davis?
Well, I was simply going to thank the staff as well, but I think that I would encourage communication between our city and other cities without trying to nickel and dime people because the sharing of information has much more value than the few bucks we get in consulting fees.
I honestly.
I'm a big proponent of sharing and care like.
Well, our San Gabriel Valley of Council of Governments, and we share everything, and it's free. And that's the most important thing in the whole world is to share our experiences and what we do and what we don't do and what we shouldn't do. So but thank you guys very much. And thank you, Mr. Russ. You've got great staff. But do we need, do we just need to raise, just basically report, correct?
Yep.
Just educator. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Thanks for all the information.
Nice job.
We move to item five, announcements of upcoming community events. Anybody? What about that Fourth of July parade?
Still no word. Information coming.
Good for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
Once we hear back from the state and the county, we will be, we will.
That is in flux, is it not? It is in flux.
Mr. Mayor, there's a hand raised. I'm just assuming that it's for community presentations.
Oh, go ahead, please. Mr. Bowen, good evening again. You're muted.
Hello again. On a lighter note, I the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens, LV three C, is going to have its first live meeting coming up on June twenty-fourth, and details will be forthcoming, but we'll ask for, we'll have some special guests and and hope to revive the participation of the residents in all activities in the city. So look forward to meeting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. We will, nothing else, JR?
Not seeing any other hands, and we did not receive any emails prior to.
We will move from item five to item six, consent calendar. Is there anything to be pulled, Mr. Russi, that you're aware of?
You're, go ahead, and then I have something.
Mr. Mayor, I don't I don't care to have it pulled, but I just need it to be noted that I'm abstaining from item six C one with regard to the EIFD. I'll be voting on everything else on the consent calendar, but for that item, I will abstain.
Thank you very much for that. I do understand that.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a hand raised. I don't know if it's a public person wanting to ask for something to be pulled.
Well, and let me point out that there's a correction on the minutes.
From Jackson Salinas.
What's that?
Mr. Salinas.
Yeah, when the minutes were first generated, it was assumed that it was the same email on the Sloan Drive or whatever the street was as opposed to the public comment. So that's been corrected as well.
Do we want to bring that individual on? I guess we should. Please, please, JR. Hello, Ms. Brenard again.
Hi, me again. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Let me have opportunity to come back again. And what I concern is for the zone meeting, I think a lot of residents really, really not get used to. They don't really know how to get in, how to register.
Ms. Brenard, we're not on that. We're not on that.
Okay.
If we do, get a hold of for later. Thank you. Okay. Item number six, consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent calendar.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Crosby, Councilmember Crosby, a second. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Yes, on everything except for six C one.
Noted. Mayor Heffernan.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Public hearings, item number seven, comprehensive fee schedule. Mr. Russi.
Actually, Marco Alvarado will handle this item, and I think I see him coming in now.
Mr. Alvarado, again.
I am here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the City Council. I will make this presentation brief. This is an annual update to the comprehensive fee schedule. As you know, every year we bring forward changes to our fees and charges that we that we list out in the comprehensive fee schedule. This year's changes are minor. We have one new fee and a couple adjustments to some existing fees. The new fee is a application. Actually, there's there's two parts of it. There's initial application, and then there's renewal for the short-term rental permit. As you may recall, this was just brought forward to the City Council recently for passage. So now we've set up the new fee of one hundred dollars and the renewing fee that someone will will pay after they have a fee for the for the first year on a renewal basis of thirty-five dollars. So that will be added to the fee schedule. There are three deposit permits that we are making adjustments to the amount of the deposits. So we're really not increasing the the fee because the fee is based on the amount of hours and work spent by by staff. This is just adjusting the initial deposit, increasing it a little bit more to what staff estimates is what the cost is going to be. So we collect the money up upfront and make it a little bit easier through the whole, going through the whole process for these fees. So slight adjustments to the the tree removal permits, lot line adjustments, and the development review applications for residential developments. The last section of of fees, I won't get into this very much. I won't I won't get into it all. Obviously, there was a long discussion previously on the waste impact fees that are going to be coming up. They are part of this report, just so we can have the comprehensive fee schedule all put together. But it must be clearly noted that this item will come back to the City Council in June. Um, but it must be clearly noted that this item will come back to the City Council in June for, um, a review discussion and final approval. And if it passes at that point, then the fees will be, uh, applicable starting July first. If they are not, we will revise the, uh, fee schedule to, uh, not include the proposed, uh, fee increases for all of the, uh, recycling and, and refuse fees that were, will, were just previously discussed and will be discussed, uh, and brought before the council in June. So, that is the, uh, sum of, of changes going forward for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Crosby, Councilmember Crosby?
And, Mr. Alvarado, just to restate, uh, something and, and what I read and I think you just stated too. The fees are really just covering what you've had to ask residents later on to get. So, they're covering the cost and they, if it does not go above those costs, you return, uh, the money as well. But it's, it's harder for the city to go back after collecting a fee to then collect more money of cost that this, the city has uh, uh, staff has given service for.
Ab- absolutely, yes. And, and if, if the, if there is an instance where we've collected too much money, the actual process took, took less than what we anticipated, then absolutely we refund the difference back to the customers.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Alvarado?
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Alvarado, it looks like you're saying that, um, uh, oh wait, where was I looking? I guess I was looking in the wrong area. I, I, I guess the, the key I was trying to think of is we were talking deposits, not fees. The deposits have been increased because we don't wanna have to ask again for a smaller amount of money or try to go collect that. It's just making sure the deposit's sufficient for a, for, for the, uh, uh, process required.
Correct.
Sorry, I, 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 I'm just stumbling over what Councilmember Crosby said, but he was much more elegant than I was.
It was a good stumble. It was very good. It was well received. Any other questions for staff, Councilmember Carter? No? Councilmember Lau? Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that also the fact that I talked to, uh, Development Director, uh, Shear and, um, he, uh, said the same thing. I, I had a lot of, some residents calling me and say, oh, that's gouging. It's like, well, no, these fees are for cost. And the problem was is the staff was having to scramble to get a hold of the people when the fees didn't quite cover what they had to and reissue more fees. So, they just put the maximum limit in there and like you say, give a refund. So, I appreciate that clarification by Mr. Shear that these fees are at a cost basis. So, it's just the ones that went up so high or the fact that they weren't compensating for staff's time to have to get more fees in return to keep going after that individual and just do it one time. So, um,
This is a public hearing.
Yes, we wanna open up the public hearing, please. Is anybody, uh, in the wings there? JR?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands, hands raised and we have not received any email requesting to speak on this item.
We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to council. Any other questions for staff or any concerns, council?
Yep.
Then we need to do a, uh, is it a roll call? Is that correct, Mr. Crass?
First the motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the comprehensive fee structure, resolution number twenty-one, twenty-five.
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Heffernan.
Yes.
Yeah.
We move to item eight, other matters, short-term rental ordinance. Mr. Russi.
Actually, uh, Community Development Director Eric Shear, I think he was on and then he left. Oh, there he is.
I see his name.
He's back.
Good evening, Mr. Shear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you may recall, at your last meeting, you did hold a public hearing regarding, uh, the draft ordinance uh, proposed for short-term rentals. Assistant Planner Gabriel Rivera gave that report. Um, the council did open the public hearing, but as there was some missing information on that draft ordinance, primarily the dates that were needed to be plugged in. Um, the council, uh, opened the public hearing and closed it, but then directed staff to come back with that final ordinance so that the version that was included with the packet was the correct version. So, staff has included those updated dates as well as clarified when this ordinance goes into effect, which would be on August seventeenth of this year, which coincides with the expiration of the existing moratorium. So, those things are aligned. The additional time is really to give the hosting platforms additional time to make sure that on their system side that they're in compliance with this new ordinance. So, we pass this ordinance on if it's a, if it's adopted to those hosting platforms. So, you can make sure that their setup on their side is, is, um, the same as what the ordinance reads for. So, with that, staff is, uh, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions for staff, council? We'll go ahead and close that and go to a public hearing. Oh, you do, Mr. Crosby?
No, no, just to thank you for correcting this stuff and appreciate. I think we gotta, uh, I had my questions answered last, last meeting.
We'll open a public hearing. Do we have anybody for public hearing, JR?
I'm sorry, I was queuing up people on the phone. Are we waiting for me to say if we have anybody ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Um, we do not have anybody with their hands raised and we have not received any email, um, request to speak on this item.
Then we will close the public hearing. A little bit, may I need a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number one zero nine eight, approving new regulations for short-term rentals.
Actually, you're gonna introduce and waive reading. So, it's first reading, not adopt.
It's the first.
That's second.
We had to, okay, so it's the first reading.
Hang on a second. Uh, Lupe, you saying we have public comment? Yeah, I think we have a public comment. Hold on one second.
Okay. We'll wait.
Where's your Jeopardy music?
I, I don't know. It's
If, if Zoom is listening, they should recognize that there be a, if there was a little music waiting button that somebody could, the host could click on, that again, another app that would make me a million dollars that goes to somebody else.
By the Price is Right. Yes, Councilmember Carter.
Tim, could I ask that when people speak, if you could just ask them to state, um, their address? I'd like to know if they live in Laverne. I mean, this is for all public comment. We used to do it years ago.
I know we've gotten away from that because it's been on Zoom, but that's a very good, uh, yeah, okay.
Well, I'd like to know if they live here in Laverne or if they're outside or what.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, we did have somebody that I guess had emailed in earlier. Um, Lupe's tried multiple times and she's not able to get a hold of them.
Then I would say that we go back to a, uh, closed public comment and we go to a motion on a first reading. Is that correct, Mr. Crass?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter, you made the motion. Is that correct?
I'm just reading the recommendation and it says adopt. We already had the first reading and second reading, didn't we? And this is, uh, the adopted.
No, no.
No, we had, we had to close it. We had to close it because the terminology and the language wasn't
Oh, okay. Okay, yes, then I'll, uh, change my motion for the first reading.
Second?
Second to accept.
I think Councilmember Lau had her hand up first, Mr. Crosby. So, Councilmember Lau, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lau?
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Heffernan.
Yes.
And then if you'll bear with me, I'm supposed to read it. So, ordinance ten ninety-eight, ordinance of the city of Laverne, amending chapter or amending the municipal code by adding a new chapter, eighteen ninety-four, to regulate the rental of residential property on short-term basis and amending related provisions.
That's a mouthful. Thank you. On that, we will move to public comments. And do you have any public comments?
Remember, Ms. Brenard wanted to
Oh, yes, Brenard, yes.
And so, it looks like we have one hand raised and then I'll go to Ms. Brenard after, um, this, this, looks like Jackson Salinas would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Salinas, if you could just tell us your address and we know your name, but your address, please.
All right, my address is five five nine six Fiat Day Mansion. And I am once again asking the City Council to consider for the next meeting, to consider both of no competence and District Attorney George Gascon. His directives are putting more people in danger and it's causing more crime in LA County, especially here in Laverne with a slight rise in crimes in other neighboring cities. Please consider this at the next meeting. You probably begin more emails about this. So, please do this for the sake of public safety and victims of violent crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Ms. Brenard, how are you? You're, you're muted.
I thank you to let me come back. Okay.
Date your address for us, please.
Okay, um, address, uh, two four six five Seventh Street, Laverne. Uh, I have concern about the meeting has to go, you know, in person, not Zooming. Even the person like me, I'm pretty good at Zoom meeting, but still get confused, right? And, uh, the people I know, resident, the neighbor around me, they want to, uh, come to the meeting, uh, just like, uh, one, two years ago, just, uh, more clear, even just some co- conflict topic, just like the fire department. We wanna listen. Why yes or no? We want to know more, right? Uh, but Zoom meeting, I feel like, uh, very difficult to participate. Uh, even school ball meeting right now, uh, with the social distancing, we could go, uh, there to like, uh, six feet or three feet according to CDC regulation. Uh, that is really increase the, uh, transparency. So, I definitely, I hope, uh, our city, uh, meeting, uh, whatever commission, plan commission or council meeting could go in person, just like before. So, everything is the start to get back to normal. So, Zoom meeting is just really, really confused, very difficult for a lot, all of us. So, I just hope our city could have that transparency that is very great for the communication of its, uh, resident and, uh, you know, council member city. So, there's so many issue coming, especially crime, just like, uh, Jason said, the crimes coming. And the homeless problem got very scary in San Dimas, very shocked. So, even I saw one people have backpack, walk on my street today. I cut rows on my front yard and I saw people had backpack. I don't know where he's come from, right? He looks like a trouble, but very difficult. I never see anybody have a backpack, walk in front of me, very rare. So, crime is coming and the homeless problem will be more serious. So, I just hope we have a better bridge to, between city and resident to communicate. So, just, uh, hope we get in-person meeting as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenard. Appreciate that. Mr. Russi, do you wanna come on that, come in on that or just as far as what we're looking at?
Um, yes, we will get back in person as soon as possible. Um, I think I heard today that, um, the masking requirements that even though the CDC had outlined their goal, the state and the county are still leaving them in place. And that, um, you know, really limits our ability to allow the number of people into a room with social distancing. And we can only, um, do our meetings where we can televise them out from our council chambers. Uh, so, um, I'm hopeful that everything we're hearing is that come around June fifteenth, we may have, um, uh, a little bit more lax and freedom in our ability to get back into person and certainly expect to be able to do that as soon as those restrictions get lifted.
Thank you. Appreciate that. JR, do we have anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple of call-ins. Um, the first person I have on the line is Misty Richardson.
Hello, Ms., Ms. Richardson. If you could please state your address, if we could, please.
Um, my address is protected.
Okay. We have a three-minute timeframe. If you would please keep to that, we'd appreciate it. Go ahead.
Yes, I can.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
Okay, so my name is Misty Richardson. The city officials, um, of Laverne are very familiar with me. My comment today is regarding the children's residential facility, David and Margaret Youth and Family Services, which is located in Laverne. Um, and also Cedar Springs Apartments, which share the property with David and Margaret. Um, David and Margaret is considered a higher level of care, which means they're supposed to be equipped with the skills to deal with youth who are prone um, to AWOL or displaying aggression. Based on records obtained online from the Laverne Police Department, the police department has called to this facility a ridiculous amount of time. From just March two thousand and nineteen to December two thousand and twenty alone, the police responded to a hundred and eighty-nine calls for service at the, at David and Margaret. The daily call log shows that most of the calls were for runaway youth or disturbances. Um, in comparison, Cedar Springs, uh, apartment, which just opened barely in August of two thousand seventeen, racked, racked in a total of two hundred and three requests, uh, for service during the same period with a majority of the calls requesting assistance for destruction of property, domestic disturbance and theft. I would like to ask what steps have been taken to address the issues at these businesses to reduce wa- the waste of the city's resources and the burden being placed on the hard-working taxpayers in Laverne. My next question is why does a high level of care, why does a high level of care group home even need police assistance for behavior? They are licensed to care for it. Uh, my next question for you guys is is Cedar Springs Apartments accountable for the tenants they approve and the harm they allow to be done on their property with no recourse? To this day, there's not one full week that goes by without the Laverne Police Department being called to David and Margaret, the Youth and Family Services and Cedar Springs Apartments. What, so what does accountability, what does accountability look like for, for these locations? How can we keep the residents safe in that area? I have shared my concerns with Mayor Tim and Bob Russi several times. The, but the city of Laverne and the police department has worked very hard over the last year to intimidate, si- silence and harassment, um, in efforts to make me retreat. In fact, on, uh, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, I went to Laverne City Hall for help. Bob Russi asked me to wait and then call the police and I was falsely arrested for misusing nine one one. Despite the fact I didn't even place the call to nine one one at that time. I was then issued, uh, a cease and desist letter from the city's attorney. Um, is this a cover-up? What pa- is this power protecting power? I'm urging concerned community members
You could, you could, Missy, Missy.
What the heck is going on at these two businesses?
Missy, if you could please finish up. You're reaching your three minutes, please. Thank you. You're at three minutes. If you could finish, please.
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
JR?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have Andy Glaze on the line.
Mr. Glaze, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Andy Glaze and I'm the Laverne Firefighters Association President. For the citizens that missed the four thirty PM budget meeting today, I just wanted to let them know that your council members, Robin Carter, Mayor Davis, Wendy Lau and Rick Crosby decided against Mayor Heffernan's proposal to properly fund the fire department and provide safety for the citizens and firefighters of Laverne. They did not support reopening Fire Station Three with a paramedic fire engine or staffing our one point three million dollar truck that has sat, unstaffed for years. Instead, they chose to kick the can down the road another year and pay for another study to be done. This study, called a standard of coverage, or SOC, was discussed by the council like it was a new idea. This is not a new idea. Sadly, all four interim fire chiefs, Summers, Leonard, Segura and now Waterhouse have recommended this study. The city's consultant, Mike Messina, recommended this study. And then the independent Messina Report recommended this study ten months ago in August. For almost two years, the, the council has known that they should do this study and did nothing. Now that Mayor Heffernan has worked with the fire chief, battalion chief and firefighters to come up with a working plan to save the fire department, now the council wants to do another study. This does nothing to address the multiple safety issues that the council is aware exists in the fire department today. To preserve the quality of public safety provided to the Laverne community, as well as maintaining safety, integrity and morale within the Laverne Fire Department, the Laverne Firefighters Association announces that it has taken a vote of no confidence on Laverne City Council members, Mayor Davis, Rick Crosby, Robin Carter and Wendy Lau, based on their decision to not properly fund the Laverne Fire Department while keeping Fire Station Three closed with no paramedic fire engine and the fire truck unstaffed. The members of the association did not take this vote lightly and have only done so after numerous efforts to address concerns. We've had multiple meetings with the City Council, City Manager and Fire Chiefs regarding our safety concerns. The decisions the City Council is making are jeopardizing the safety of the community and its firefighters. And we have no choice but to raise our voices. Please rest assured that we will continue to do our best to keep Laverne as safe as possible, even under these challenging conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze. Mr. Russi, did you wanna comment on anything that Misty had to say as far as David and Margaret or we'll just move on?
Uh, I can pass it on to the chief. I, we've all talked about the previous administration and issues that dealt with David and Margaret. My understanding is that things have improved significantly. My understanding is that things have improved significantly since then, since, uh, um, Leroy Haynes has taken over. So, uh, but I will, uh, the chief was probably monitoring this, so I will follow up with him tomorrow.
Well, I know the programs they had are no longer there either, so it's, it's major, major things have gone in a positive realm for them, so. Okay. Um, JR?
Nothing further received, sir.
We're gonna go ahead and close public comment and move to council comments and conference and media reports. Who would like to start? Uh, Mr. Crosby, Councilmember Crosby?
I'm always good to start. Um, uh, I'm on the, uh, uh, foot bill transit, um. Uh, bus, bussing and, uh, want, they want to announce that, uh, they have a new double-decker bus, uh, fully electric. First one in Northern Cali- uh, Northern, um, America, North America. And, um, it's gonna be starting out and running in Southern California. So the great advancement is what they've been doing. Um, also, you, uh, earlier this week, uh, vaccines were, were, uh, approved for twelve to fifteen-year-olds. Um, since I have a child in that age frame, I went around, uh, and, uh, Rite Aid's giving them without appointments. Uh, Fairplex given without appointments, uh, Vons, uh, you did have to make appointment, but they have them there for, for as well. So, so they are. Readily available any, almost places, um, CVS. I did not get there to check them out though. But, uh, readily available, um, around for anyone that needs a vaccine. And, uh, that's it for my announcements. Thank you.
Mr. Crosby, Councilmember Carter?
Yes, um, first I want to say that on May eighth. Uh, it was a Saturday, two Saturdays ago, our police department held an etching catch event at Bonita High School. I want to thank Sanders Towing for their help in making this event successful. The owner of Sanders Towing, Scott Dilly, volunteered his time and his family came out to help him. Use his forklift to lift the vehicles to have their license place etched on the catalytic, catalytic converters. Fifty-three vehicles were, uh, taken care of that day. I want to give kudos to also Holly and Sam, who with the police department, uh, organized the event. And also to our wonderful RSVPs who came out to organize the cars coming through. It was a great event and we all know this is a big problem in the city. So I want to thank the police department totally. Thank you. One more thing is, um, last Friday, our Bonita High School varsity soccer team was in second round. And for CIF playoffs and they did so good. It went into double time overtime. And they lost two to one, but they played so good. I want to congratulate every one of those girls. The coaching staff in the school for having such a wonderful image come out from our school in our city. So thank you for that. And the last thing is, I want the community to hear me. Our city is safe. We would not allow any of our employees. Public safety is number one to all of us. We give our best and we give our all. We have given every bit of equipment. To our, uh, police fires that they need. And I just want to say that we just talked tonight. We want Fire Station Three open with paramedics. We said we're going to do that. They're just saying that the fire truck's not going to be there, but that's still going to open up Fire Station Three as soon as we can hire men. So men or women, I encourage everyone to come apply to Laverne. We're a wonderful city. So I'm sorry that earlier comments were made. Go on, please.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, you know, uh, share with everyone, you know, again, some of the information with regard to the COVID vaccines. I'm, you know, I'm glad that there was mention of, uh, the fact that you don't need appointments, that the age has been lowered. Um, I think as we are looking to try to get to, um, some of the things that we were used to doing in the, in the past. Uh, really looking forward to, um, being around folks again. I know people are excited to try to do meetings and everything, but that does also require that we all do our part. Um, so definitely look into the vaccinations, look into what's appropriate for you, but, you know, do understand that some of these. Um, advances that we'll make will be determined by, uh. You know, how well we're doing in terms of our numbers. And so the numbers have been looking good, which is great. Um, as many of you may recall, um, you know, my dad's still recovering. You know, he's over COVID, but he was hospitalized for it back in December. And he still remains in a convalescent center trying to get back on his feet and come home. And, you know, I just want people to think about that as that, you know, as we get excited about moving forward. That there are still people who are dealing with the very real effects of COVID and that it is not completely gone. And so, you know, be kind, be safe, wear your mask where it's required that you're where, you know, that you need to wear your mask. And, you know, adhere to social distancing, wash your hands, do all the things that you're supposed to be doing. Um, so I really encourage that, but I also encourage folks to, you know, again, I was glad to see the folks participating. Uh, in both the study session and in tonight's city council meeting as always. And I know there are always folks that watch. Um, after the meeting, if they aren't able to make it, um, and please inform yourselves, look at the information that's out there and make sure that, um. You know, you are, you are, you know, you are keeping abreast of what's going on. Don't be afraid to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, several things. One is that, yes, uh. We're, we're not finished with COVID yet. We're getting good news. We're getting more, uh, i- insight. Because of the changing information with the, uh, center, uh, the CDC. But, uh, the, that still needs to filter through the state and the county levels before we can take action on it. Cause they're just making recommendations. Those signs are pointing favorably, but, um. The, 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 we haven't finished the process, so we need to keep doing that. And yes, my daughter fits within that new category of twelve to fifteen. So she'll be getting her vaccine soon. Um, the rest of my family's been vaccinated. Um, the, uh, uh, the Laverne San Dimas Education Foundation kicked off this week's. Uh, celebration of certified staff employees for the schools. By taking gift bags around to each of the campuses, I was blessed with the opportunity of handing out bags to, uh, the. Uh, certified staff at Reunon and it was a wonderful event and everybody was gracious and we wanted to share with them. And, and certified staff everywhere know that we care about you. We're thankful that you're there to help our students and our teachers. As well as the rest of the administration, um, had a, had a Fairplex, uh, meeting this last week. Um, Fairplex isn't done yet. They're not, they're still existing. Um, this fall, um, will most likely be a Fairplex light, uh, engagement. Um, I'll wait till they introduce more details, but, um, you know, we are not going to have a full-blown fair this, this September. And, um, and yes, the Leroy Haynes, uh, merger or acquisition of David and Margaret. Should straighten that in, that situation out greatly and help put them on a good path for helping our youth. Um, and finally, um, all of this is serious, especially with respect to. Every service provided by our city and, and the discussion is important. The conversation within council and outside council is important to have and. Try to learn as much as you can about it because this is a serious issue. We take these things seriously. And, um, our fire department, our police department and our, and our public works, folks and community services. Administration are all important. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, I first want to thank the staff of the CIP. I also want to thank, uh, all of our staff for the, uh. The budgets. I want to thank, uh, our, uh, staff, uh, uh, Tracy and Lisa. For, uh, helping us with the, our organic waste and, uh, we've got a great staff and they do a great job. And, uh, it's a lot of hard work. I know if you guys look at Christie's, uh. She sent you the financial report. It's three hundred million pages. So it's like sifting through a, uh, you know, war and peace. But it's very important information because every one of those dollars has got a place for it, so. But I also want to, um, I want to chime in also on the girls soccer. When I was there, I was able to see most of the game and. And I was getting reports and a two to one in double overtime is just crazy, but they did a fantastic job. The girls, the coaches like, uh, Councilmember Carter said. But the thing on COVID and the vaccines, you know, there's, the, the problem is there's a lot of people out there that have had one vaccine. They need two. They need to make sure they get their second shot. I talked to, um, Catherine Barker, Supervisor Barker this last week and. There is a timeframe that you can push. I think it was sixty to ninety days on your second shot, but you know. You're not vaccinated completely. You need to get your second shot. And if Johnson, Johnson comes, get that shot for a single. That's great, but. You know, if we want to have Fourth of July and we want to have a lot of these different things and open meetings. The more people that are vaccinated, that means more of us are safe. So, um, I want Fourth of July parade just like anybody else. I think it's awesome. The fireworks. I want our council meetings back in place, but. The more that we vaccinate, the more safer we all are and we can have our open meetings again and be in a much safer place. Uh, so being that said, uh, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. Be sure, appreciate all your participation. Thank you, council. Sometimes it gets contentious, but, uh. We will move through these, these subjects and move through these, uh, issues as we go along. Our next, um. Scheduled meeting is for June seventh, twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry. Yeah, June seventh. At four thirty PM for, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation with department heads. And the next scheduled council meeting is Monday, June seventh at six thirty PM. If there's no other business to attend, I call this meeting adjourned at eight sixteen PM. Thank you, everybody. Everybody have a great week.